And I'd like to call the Adams County Cultural Council Study Session Number Four to order. Melvin, would you call the role, please?
Yes. When you hear your name called, please say here or present. Joyce Downing.
Here.
Erica Hernandez.
Here.
Ed Hanson.
There.
Megan Hartline.
Present.
Jessie Martinez. Christina Montan.
Yeah.
Emily Burt. Jeff Lappin.
Here.
That concludes roll call.
Thank you. Right. Next on the agenda is the process confirmation, and I'll just read this for the audience. All council members should have their own flex portal up to follow along. We will not be screen sharing. Discussion will take place for each organization in category applied for and will be guided by our 2022 rubrics. Each organization will get a maximum of eight minutes for discussion. We'll keep time and give a two-minute warning. Study sessions are recorded. Recordings will be available within two business days on the Adams County website. Please be courteous on the virtual platform. This is an open discussion, but we will call on any hands raised. We will have a 10-minute break halfway through the organization discussion. Please try and stay in the meeting outside of the break. And a note to the public, study sessions are open to the public for observation only. Organizations will not have the opportunity to comment. Please keep your cameras off and yourselves muted. Okay, thank you, everyone. And with that, Dana, do you have any updates?
Dana has not joined us yet, so we can do her updates toward the end. And I just want to welcome Jessie Martinez has joined us.
Oh, good.
Good evening, Jessie.
Good evening. Good to see you.
Good seeing you. All right, so we'll start the discussions then. The first organization is Stories on Stage. And let's see here, Stories on Stage is requesting funds, funding for one project. So I will open up the discussion.
This is Jeff. I just want to first say thank you for submitting the proposal. We appreciate it. But as I looked at the anticipated attendees that are associated with the project, it appears that the majority of this reaches outside Adams County. Of the 900 projected attendance, I was unclear to me how much would be Adams County. I'd like some clarification of that.
Thank you.
I second Jeff, and I also was wondering what their marketing strategies will be to reach more of the Adams County residents as well.
Yeah, I'll follow that up and agree with both of you. These seem like very good programs, but Quinto in Adams County Schools is a very different project from stage productions in Denver when we, as Adams County, are evaluating the impact to Adams County residents. And what I would suggest for this, to help us evaluate that, is doing two different offerings or two different projects that get at those two different offerings so that it's easier to explain the impact for us. That said, I think it sounds like a great program.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. I'll just add, you know, that I agree with everything that has been said so far, but I do appreciate the grant. And I know that they'll have a lot of good events. And so with that, we will close that discussion. And we will go next to Sue Tietra. And they are asking for two projects. So I will open up the discussion concerning Sue Tietra.
I'll kick off the discussion by saying that I particularly for Project Two, Carritos, I love the multi-week program where Adams County residents are participating in making the art. I think when we're talking about impact and engagement, this kind of project has that extra level of not just a performance, but co-creating, and I love that about it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I totally agree. I love their mission. I love their history. I love that in Project One, in the Adams County Schools, it's going to be a six-week class. So it's more than just one touch point. And then like Megan said, in Project Two, incorporating Adams County residents and being the art, the partnership with anything, I think it's really great. And I think it's worth noting that I just really applaud like their introspective look at what DEIA means to them. And I just want to throw it out there for them, for everybody else. Another lens to DEIA that we've seen that I think they could look at is accessibility for people living with disabilities or that have neurodivergence, things like that. I didn't see that lens, so I just think it'd be interesting to consider. But yeah, I think they're really great.
I thought it's a very good program. I especially like the idea, when they talked about the step internship program and the PASOS program for young males, the phrase "you are my other me", something I've been promoting personally for a long time. The only flaw in that argument is they got this budget switched from what I'm seeing in the listing.
That's right. I was gonna bring that up. It's just totally opposite.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyone else? And I appreciate you bringing the budget, you know, because I was going to mention that. But other than that, I think it's, you know, I appreciate the grant that they wrote, so. Anyone else have anything? All righty. The next organization that we have listed is Tango Colorado, but we're going to skip that particular grant and organization. They ask for GOS, and they are not an Adams County home organization. And so they're not eligible for GOS from Adams County. So the next one we have then would be Taserro Foundation. And with that, they are actually asking for funding for two projects, the Indian Market and Ceremonial Dance, and then the 1840 Rendezvous Spanish Colonial Art Market. So that I will open that up for discussion.
So when evaluating the two different projects for Project One, I really appreciated the detailed connection with Adams County five-star student participation. And I thought it was a really thoughtful way to connect to the schools and get students engaged. And I thought that was a really nice detail that they really painted a good picture of, that we could make that connection. On the flip side, for Project Two, I would say that the fort is relatively far away from Adams County if we're thinking about traveling across the metro area. And we have very little information presented in the grant about anticipated attendance from our marketing efforts to Adams County residents. So just different angles there when we're thinking about impact.
I totally agree with you, Megan. You know, I was looking at that. I think that it's a great grant, written very well. But I was just concerned about the benefits to Adams County, so. Does anyone else have anything?
I was gonna mention, similar to our previous discussions, is thinking about how the site-based kind of activities that are outside of Adams County, how you could, and this is just kind of advice or just thinking outside the box of like thinking how you can have a traveling exhibit similar to some of the museums like Denver Museum or Museo de las Americas, who's submitted their application with us that we'll review as well, is like being able to have, you know, an exhibit within Adams County that could be an extension of kind of site-based work that's happening outside the county.
Thank you. Any other input? Okay, with that, we'll move to the next organization, which is the Caramonts. And they are requesting funding for two projects. I will open up the discussion with this organization. First project is Pride of the Farm, and the second one is the estate sale, so.
This is Jeff. I just thought this was a very good grant proposal. Thank you for submitting it. And I just want to, I'm just pointing out that I think that this was a different type of program than most of the others that we've reviewed. It's very immersive, and I think it's well planned out, so I think it should be a great experience.
Yeah, I totally agree. We're at the end of our list, and we haven't seen anything like this. So I applaud them for their extreme creativity. I also really loved how they explained how they evaluate impact with the net promoter score. I think that's a really interesting quantitative measurement. I really liked that. For Project One, I think the topic is so fascinating, and the site at the Metzger Farm Open Space is really cool. And then I thought the second project sounds really immersive and just like unparalleled creativity from this organization.
I also put the word creativity in my notes for this. I thought that both projects really demonstrated creativity and ingenuity in new ways. For Project One, we had a conversation last week, I think, about art in unexpected public spaces and how exciting that is and how it really drives engagement in new ways. And this is such an example of that. And then in Project Two, I just particularly appreciated the commitment to hiring a local playwright. Again, I feel like these projects just really think like full circle about how to invest in the local arts community and create something new.
The only thing I can say, Megan, is ditto.
I was gonna just mention, I did like, I mean, it's so much about thinking about DEI efforts. And what I liked is their application and their project to just focusing on the LGBT community and being able to spotlight that as a part of arts and culture and having a, you know, inclusive and thinking inclusive about the community and its representation in the arts. So I was happy to see that.
Is there anyone else? Hearing then, we will move next to the Denver Brass. And they are requesting funds for one project, getting down to brass tacks. So with that, I'll open the discussion.
So I'll say I appreciate a grant request that includes a joke for us at the end. So thank you for that. I also like, more seriously, to the content of the grant, I thought it was very thoughtful. I thought that this organization has given a lot of thought and investment in how to reach people, new people, in new ways with different kinds of outreach. So I just thought that they were very, very thoughtful and creative there.
Yeah, I agree. I think this was written very well. Also love the joke. I really appreciated their pivot and nod to accessibility during the pandemic. And I think their brass for the soul idea is really wonderful, trying to spark memory for people in senior living homes. I just thought that was really creative, so.
Yeah, I like the diversity of the venues that they had listed.
Yeah, I agree that this organization, it's a well-written grant, and I do like the diversity. Anyone else? All right, so the next organization is the Urban Farm. And let's see here, it's a traveling all-around farm. I believe it's just one project here.
I love this. I can already tell Megan knows, like, I love this. I'm all over this. This is fantastic. I love that they're targeting Title I schools. I love that they're integrating animal care with farming and horticulture and learning about healthy food. I just think this is fantastic, and I would love to see them bring more programming to Adams County. I think it's wonderful. I looked at the list of animals they're bringing into Adams County Schools, and they recognize like transportation is a barrier. I just think it's wonderful, so heart eyes.
Yeah, I second Christina all the way, and I really appreciate their efforts under DEIA also. They're having that material in Spanish and also trying to engage and making sure everybody understands what's going on and what's happening and the accessibility that they're offering. It's great. So yeah, I really enjoyed reading about this organization.
I am just glad that they're doing this. This is so needed. Emphasis on agriculture and livestock education. Their focus on bringing in the troubled youth. I love this one.
Y'all have a few many of the things that I thought were great about this program. And one thing that I also wanted to point out was that this was just a very, very well-written grant. I very much appreciated the included demographics of students served. That really paints the story of the impact that this program is making. And I thought that this was a really unique program serving people, so I agree. I thought it was amazing.
I totally agree with everything that's been said. I do really think it's a very well-written grant, and it's exactly what we need brought forward, this type of thing, and especially it coordinates with the STEM education, so. Anyone else? All righty, next we have Think 360 Arts for Learning. And the funding is just being requested for one project, and it's arts for all. With that, I will open up the discussion.
I like the fact that there's the venues, there's, you know, a pretty nice list of where the project's going to be taking place. But I don't know exactly what the project is from the description. Obviously, art development, creativity, but I wasn't able to pick out from this what exactly the project is. And perhaps someone could help me with that.
I have the same note, that I really need more detail around the programming. But I do want to call out, as a member of unincorporated Adams County, they're going to Wellby, which is part of unincorporated Adams County, so I did like to see that. But yeah, I'm not sure what they're going to be doing at Wellby.
So I agree, and I think, so Think 360 has a great reputation, and every engagement that I've ever seen with them has been like amazingly well-developed, high-quality program and programs, and especially like training for teachers as well as for students. They really offer like a full-circle offering. I agree that the project description was a little, like, there was almost an assumption that we know or understand what the programming is in that writing. I think the way that our grant formatting is constructed, we ask a question about describe your organization's programs and describe how your organization has adapted during COVID. And I think we got some pretty detailed program descriptions in those sections, but it's not quite clear which of those are offered specifically for the Adams County project. So agreed that it's hard to narrow down exactly granularly what's happening for Adams County.
Yeah, I'd agree with Megan. If you know, I think 360, you would know kind of the roundabout picture of all the things that they do for, you know, their programming. I mean, I would have liked advice for the applicant would be like thinking about, because a lot of their artists do, are local artists. Like, the way I would recommend framing the application in the future is thinking about like Adams County local artists that they go into classrooms or they do professional development with teachers in Adams County. So that would be my advice about thinking how you can strengthen your application, so it's not so vague as thinking about how you are including artists from the community in Adams County that can go and do programming within the county in that way.
And I agree with what everyone is saying, and I was just reading my notes, and I just pulled out some, and I think this is just exactly what we were looking. Well, it's not exactly what we were looking for, but I think they were inferring the fact that they were helping the school programming by subsidizing custom programming and removing financial barriers. But they definitely did not spell out what we were looking for when we're asking about the projects, so. Does anyone else have any comments? All right, with that, we'll move to the next organization, which is Thorn Ecological Institute. With that, they are requesting funding for one project, in-school nature science program. So with that, I'll open up the discussion.
I guess I'll go. This is another thing I just love to see, you know, bringing the nature, the outdoors to kids. So I really like their programming, and I really like that they're doing three visits instead of just one, so that repeat exposure makes more of an impact. And then on the third visit, placing the kids in nature that they've just been talking about, and it's found all around you. So I think it's really great.
And I appreciate also how they mentioned with these statistics and what they mentioned about like kids 20 years ago not going outside, well, kids now are not going outside as much as kids 20 years ago did. And also their DEI practices too, how they talk about what their committed practices are for the upcoming years. And having that bilingual content, again, accessibility, I think it's really important.
I agree on all those.
I was gonna mention just the budget allocated to the project. They explicitly say that it's funding 60% of the program expenses. And for like $16,000 to reach that many kids is pretty, pretty nice. I think it's a good strike of balance of like, you know, costs related to the ask and, you know, impactful at the end of the day.
I agree, and also thinking about like program design and budgeting, one element that I loved about this program that I think is pretty unique is the multi-part visit. Like you said, Christina, I love a multi-part visit experience, but also that the third visit has a memento, that's a tangible book that includes pictures of the kids having the experiences. I think that is such a neat, creative way to have a tangible connection to the experience and to further the learning and to tie science learning to language learning. I think that it's a really creative element of this, and budget well-used to have that like takeaway.
I too think it's a very creative grant. And what kind of struck me was in the DEIA section where they had been very thoughtful about inclusivity way early, like in 2012, and where they had actually hired a consultant to create a committee and start planning forward. So I was pretty impressed with that.
Just a note to the council, there are a couple of organizations that applied, but since you mentioned it specifically with this one, the council did bring the program funding down to 50% instead of 60%, so that was a change made. So we'll make those changes when we do the allocation.
Thanks, Zoe.
Good to know.
Anyone else? All right. So the next organization is Tashco Thornton Arts Sciences and Humanities Council. They are requesting funding for GOS for two projects in visual arts. With that, I will open the discussion on Tashco.
So I really, I really loved reading this grant. I love their description of their advertising and outreach. I loved their focus and knowledge of who their community is and who makes up their community. They described that they're planning an adaptive team night, and I just think that's a really great take on accessibility. I thought Project One was a modest ask for the reach, and it sounds like a really fun event. And then Project Two, Dia de los Muertos, I love the scale. Like, it's a big event, and I think it's really exciting. I think they have great programming, and they're tailoring it to their residents. I really appreciated the very detailed breakdown of their costs for the event. All very transparent. And then for the visual arts project, I love the nod to their Latinx residents and creating meaningful art in the community where they live. I didn't see it detailed anywhere, but I would hope in the selection process that they're also ensuring that the artist has the qualifications, the background is relevant to create art for the Latinx community. So just didn't see that part.
I thought, enjoyed the, you know, reading through this proposal. I thought the two projects were really good. And I certainly am pleased to see that they want to add to the public art, which they've got a good track record on. I, you know, I have to say that I would like to have seen, or at least be assured that priority will be given to Colorado artists for this project, if all things being equal, keep everything in the community. And I thought that the project itself, unlike, you know, others that we've seen, have generally been really well explained in terms of what the end result that they're looking for in these types of projects. And this is, seems fairly open. I think I get it, because it's addressing a broad theme, and they're saying they want to be interactive, 3D. But beyond that, it's, I guess it's anybody's guess what we're going to end up seeing at the end of the day. But, you know, I trust that with their track record, they'll do a good job on this.
I do like the city's commitment to that too, with the, I think, the 50% investment in the project.
On the topic of budgets, one clarification that I would have appreciated was whether that 50% commitment is represented in the budget under other or they break down a little bit in-kind support, and I'm not sure whether that's the same as the support from the city or whether there's financial support from the city that I could have used a little more clarity on. But at the same time, relatively modest asks for great community events. So it's not a barrier to me when thinking about this at that kind of funding level. I also really appreciated the detail given in what general operating support would do for this organization. They listed a lot of needs that general operating support can meet. And I think, as we thought last year about reallocating GOS versus projects, this was the kind of thing where I know organizations have unpredictable needs, like if they're moving from facility to facility, there's a lot of associated unexpected costs with still being able to offer. There's a lot of associated unexpected costs with still being able to offer programs for the public. So I appreciated that detail given.
Thank you. Do we have any other input? Hearing none, we'll move to the next organization, Thornton Community Band, and they are requesting GOS only. With that, I will open up the discussion.
I really enjoyed reading their grant. I think it's great that they offer their concerts for free. And I think it's great that they found a new space with the city to call home that reduces their rent. So I thought it was nice. I would love to see programs and projects from them.
Anyone else?
I think I get with maybe comparatively less detail since I was just talking about GOS, but they, you know, gave some examples of what GOS will support them in.
Yeah. And I totally agree with both of you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment? That we can move to the next organization. Again, it's only for GOS, but and it's from the Thornton Community Chorus. With that, I will open that for discussion.
And I'll just build off my last comment with no pause in between. The comparatively, the community chorus gave us a little more financial detail about what GOS can support them in facility costs. And I appreciated just hearing more about what their needs were and how we can support them in that.
I totally agree with you. Is there anyone else who has any comments?
And I mentioned just, it's nice to receive applications that are from, you know, cities and you know, organizations that reside within Adams County and kind of it is people from the community that reside in the community with these organizations. So, you know, Adams County resident led arts and cultural organizations. And to Megan's point, it's great when we thought about the increase in GOS that it's like organizations like this that really do benefit from an investment in SCFD.
Anyone else? Right, hearing then, I just want to make a comment. We're more than halfway through, but I am wondering, does anyone want to break or should we've only got three more organizations? Shall we just continue on? All right, I didn't hear any negatives, so.
Go for it.
All right. Okay, with that, then we have the Westminster Community Artist Series. They are asking for GOS and also for two projects. So I will open up the discussion. The first project is education in the arts and the second one was arts in the community.
Just to note that both of their projects were above that 50% mark as well.
Thanks, Zoe.
As I would just say, just the expansiveness of being able to offer arts across Westminster in the community. I think it's the accessibility thing and making sure that, you know, the community has access to that from that city. So I think that's, you know, something that's great to hear, similar to my previous statement around abandoned choir in Thorin.
Yeah, I'm also.
I'm excited about the around the world street fair. I think that's a pretty exciting offering, so.
And I also like to add their the efforts as well. They mentioned they'll focus on seniors and low income families and people with disabilities. So that's, that's really much appreciated.
So for me, you know, I really appreciate the grant and the and the offerings that they're proposing. But I am thinking that way I'm I'm looking at it, that we have actually more than two projects in, you know, the different proposal. In fact, you know, we could almost pull them out and have five different projects applied for. So I'm a little concerned about that. It's not that I don't like it. I do, right? I think it's wonderful, you know, what they're trying to do, but I just think that these proposals really could lend themselves to a project and that be integrate trade intrigued rated into one massive proposal.
I agree with you, Joyce, when I was reading the application. This is similar to a discussion we have last year. I think with Megan and looking at when we talked about GOS, like this seems like more of a GOS, you know, request that they can cover whatever the things that they would like to do based on their kind of entity. And I do agree with you with the multiple services. It would be nice, you know, I think when you're looking at expansive programming in that way. You know, from that standpoint, to think about one, you know, broad reach versus like in-depth and kind of more quality, high quality and in-depth work. My recommendation for the applicant would be just to kind of think about two, two separate single projects that can really dive deep into kind of impact around arts and culture within your organization or within your community. But that's just, you know, advice and a thought recommendation.
I agree.
Oh, go ahead. I was just gonna say we can add that as a topic of discussion for the debrief as well and how we might look at making it clear in the guidelines what actually denotes a project.
Thanks, Zoe.
Yeah, and I I would just say that I am, I appreciate that that this organization, which is doing so much in Adams County and has such broad programs that they're offering, is also asking for GOS and, you know, explaining the infrastructure expenses that go into supporting all of these programs and how GOS can help them do it. But I agree that these are not really readable as individual projects when it's the whole breadth of their very broad programming that they're offering. And which sounds amazing.
Is there anyone else? Hearing none, we'll go to the next organization, which is wow, all right. And they are requesting funding for two projects and this organization is the Children's Museum World of Wonder. The first project is benefiting, I'm sorry, residents of Adams County with museum experiences. And the second is the outreach programming to Adams County sites. So with that, I'll open up the discussion.
I would say that, yeah, as as is typical of this organization, it's a wonderful program. I I think there, this is a group that's aptly named because this is a really very, very good proposal. I think the second project in particular with the educational outreach was impressive. And so thank you for submitting this.
Yeah, I totally agree with everything Jeff said. It's so exciting. And I just want to say as a mom to a kid under five, I so appreciate that they're still offering two opportunities for us to visit with masks required. I think that's a wonderful way to provide accessibility. And it's almost brought me to tears and I'm so excited. I'm gonna take my three-year-old this week. So thank you for that. I really appreciate it.
Anyone else?
I also, I did really appreciate that this was separated out into those projects that are two different elements, like bringing people to the location and bringing the the location resources out to people outside there. That was really helpful to help us think about those different things having different impact. And I agree that project two seems really, really thoughtful about reaching head start locations and bringing programming to attendees and students there. So I thought it was great.
And I piggyback off of Megan. I do like the whole site-based kind of work that's happening. You don't see a lot of that happening like out with site-based work. So it was great to see that there's an extension. I didn't even know that, but was happy to hear about that extension in those sites with the the museum.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to the next organization, which is Young Voices of Colorado. And they are requesting funding for two projects, East Adams County Prairie Voices and West Adams Fifth Grade Honor Choir. So with that, I will open it up for discussion.
Um, I really appreciated the with project one that they're in Bennett and the acknowledgement of music programming in rural areas. And I also really appreciated that they're educating teachers as well. I think that's a great way to multiply reach and that it's free. For project two, I felt I was a little low on details.
Yeah, I would agree with Christina on that second project in particular. I think she's spot on.
And just a note for me, I really appreciate them reaching out to the Bennett High School. I think it's really valuable to be able to reach out to the rural areas and especially they were looking at predominantly title one youth also. So and then they culminate after an all-day with the kiddos that, you know, that they have an evening concert for everyone. So I thought that was great. And I I agree with the the comments, project two.
I'm gonna make a comment for the council, just thinking about, you know, because we are talking about unincorporated Adams County and counties that are cities that reside in towns outside of kind of the Denver metro area. If there's just, this is just me thinking to the council, like ways that we can kind of help bridge that awareness of, you know, possible sites, partnerships within those towns and cities. So that, you know, this is a great example of this organization making a concerted effort to to operate there. Not all organizations in the in this pool of SCFD applications may not know about those opportunities of those partnerships, similar to Bennett High School. But wondering as a council if there's a way we can begin to, I don't know, create a list or just be able to be a referral to those partnerships or those organizations that are we fund to help bridge those connections to those cities and towns.
Yeah. Thanks, Jesse. And I think, you know, in the past, we have tried to do that, but it's worthy of a conversation to continue. Maybe we can come up with some more ideas on how to do that, which I would like. Anyone else? All right, with that, congratulations, everyone. We have completed the interviews for all of our organizations. And and I appreciate all all your hard work. I mean, it is, it's very, it's a lot of fun, but it takes a lot of time and it's a lot of work. So thank you so much. Is Dana on board with this yet? Zoe?
She is.
Dana, did you want to give an update or?
The only update that I have is SFD Board had its meeting today. Thank you, Erica. Kudos to Erica. She did a fabulous job on presenting her her involvement with the leadership coursework at Red Rocks Community College. So heads up to you. The board approved the funding plans for 2022. I will get those to you next week. I wanted to add a couple of details to it to present to you. So I'll be looking for that either Monday or Tuesday.
Thank, that's it?
We just met last week. I don't have any anything else to give.
All right, thanks, Dana. Zoe.
May I ask a question for Dana?
Sure.
Dana, I think in our last session, you mentioned that virtual projects would not be funded in 2023. Is that correct?
I guess correct.
Is is the door open for discussion on that? Because I'm only, I'm asking that because with pandemic, so many of these organizations pivoted to virtual in a very meaningful way. Where they were able to extend reach into the community and, you know, just new and creative ways that you know, if that's a could be, if that's a component of a project, I would like to think that we could still fund those. If the door is open for that, I'd love to discuss it.
So Jeff, the decision was made, and of course, it's through all seven counties, so it's not just Adams. But we're we're kind of moving back towards the pre-COVID way of looking at how we fund organizations. The problem, I understand and I really appreciate organizations being creative and being able to pivot to doing virtual programming. Virtual programming can still occur. But what will count towards compliance and funding is the in-person portion of their programming. So if they do a hybrid, it'll be the in-person. If they're doing virtual, they can do it, but it doesn't count towards fulfilling the requirement for programming for for funding.
Just wanted to ask, thank you.
And 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 Jeff, just to let you know, we had put that into the the guideline. So all organizations should be aware of that. If they read the guidelines.
Yeah, I was gonna mention to Dana is like when we're thinking about, you know, DEI efforts and and access is one of them, just thinking about the accessibility of arts and cultural programs. That's what I was like thinking, like virtually, a lot of it is the accessibility thing that I thought would be kind of vital to that broader exposure and access. So I was, I was disappointed to hear like Jeff a little bit about that, but I understand kind of the resorting back to, you know, and just documenting that in live live performances and activities.
Well, and just to kind of tag team on that, Jeff or Jesse, sorry. One of the, one of the decisions was really on how do you, how do you assess the impact with virtual programming? Everything's different. Organizations, they're counting everything from videos put on YouTube to social media hits. It's hard for us to determine impact. And so to keep it very straightforward and in and easy to assess. We we went with going back to the in-person. It's just very difficult for people to keep tracking to how how do you count whether a person clicked on a video and watched it two minutes versus the entire time. There's only one way that I can think of doing that. And of course, that that affects my accessibility, which is to monetize it and to actually have ticket sales and that kind of thing. So that's the decision as it is now. If something comes up and we have to go back inside, it may change. So it's not in stone, but it's in stone.
So I have a question, Dana. I'm just wondering, when when was this decision made? Because I'm not quite sure. I I was kind of surprised when I heard about it.
I don't know, Joyce. I have to go and look at my notes and it was, I don't remember. I don't have an answer for you right now.
Yeah, you know, but I'm just kind of curious because I, you know, I I thought I was the only one who was shocked over it, but evidently there was others also. I'm just kind of wondering, you know, how many organizations really understand that? Because when you are reading the grants, you know, as as mentioned before, I mean, many people became very creative trying to compensate between, you know, virtual versus in-person and. compensate between, uh, you know, virtual versus in-person and definitely made comment about, you know, if we have to pivot back, you know, depending on, on the pandemic or not. So I'm just kind of curious and, and also maybe why it wasn't highlighted to us before we started reading the grants, you know, and that, and that's just my personal, just wondering about it, you know, so.
I appreciate.
I would just hope that, um, organizations, you know, knowing that this is the new, um, policy going forward, that they won't abandon the virtual aspect of it. Because I think everyone realizes that, well, it did take work, but it's, it's a lot less costly than getting butts in seats. If they can make that a component of what they're doing, they can only benefit from it, even if they don't get rewarded for it. They'll, they'll be, you know, internally, they'll, the, the organizations will be rewarded by reaching out. So I hope they'll continue to look for those opportunities.
Agree 100% Jeff.
Dana, I have a question too, on the same topic. If an organization did apply for funding for a virtual program, is there something that needs to be done on the adjustment side? As we look to allocate the funds, is that something that SCFD will say? You know, and I don't know if there's a specific example of, of an organization that's doing something, but yeah, what does that look like on the actual distribution side?
Um, it's going to be up to the council, but I will say that it, it's in the guidelines. Organizations don't file guidelines. You guys just score accordingly.
Okay, but it's not part of our rubric in any way. So as the council scores, nothing, there's nothing that addresses that. So but it sounds like this council is just going to score the way they score and we fund the way we fund. There isn't really a process of saying, oh, that's a virtual program. So we need to tweak the numbers in any fashion.
I'd have to put some thought into that. Um, I don't know. I, I'd have to think about it. I don't want to be put on the spot and say something on something that I can't back up right now. So, uh, and I might have to take that back to the team. Because it, it may need to go to everybody so that we can come up with the, with the, um, concerted effort on one answer and not several different answers out there. So can I table that?
Sure, but this has become a very hot topic because I saw hands go, so Megan, Christina and Jesse all have, uh, all have comments. Megan?
Yeah, uh, two things. Can I ask a clarifying question, which is Dana, you said 2023. Do you mean any programs occurring in 2023? Or do you mean for the 2023 grant cycle?
Oh, I'm off. Um, so moving, so in 2020, 2022 programs, the grants that you're reading currently should be for in-person programming to be funded in 22 to use the funding in 2023.
Yeah, correct. So my, my question was, did the comment about that refer to the, the applications that come in 2023? Or for the programs in 2023?
The applications.
Okay.
The applications in 2022 and 23.
Got it. Got it. Thank you.
For projects.
Yeah. Jesse?
I think Christina was first.
Christina?
Thanks. I just wanted to say, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe we read anything that was asking for funding for an exclusively virtual program. So I know a lot of organizations said that they are now following their in-person programming with a streaming event and all of that. But I personally, in thinking back, don't remember any conflicts. However, I would like to lend my voice and support that I don't think virtual programming should be banished because as Jesse mentioned, there's still an accessibility. And Dana, this is just for you to take back. This is not towards you. So I just wanted to lend support to that discussion.
I would just like to add, um, just for context, even just, you know, with my own educational programs at the symphony, like the start and stop of programming in life program. Like we planned it and we weren't able to do anything until February because of the mask. So like, just thinking about like the, you planned it, but it couldn't happen because it was either restrictions of mask wearing or vaccination. So it's those kinds of things within the venues that kind of did cause a little bit of conflict of, and you know, the COVID Delta. So that was another thing. Side note, I do think like as a council, I think, um, and I, and this is kind of how I would view the council too. And, and this is how I did my application to be on the council, is just thinking about how we could, if it's not going to be counted in the application with SCFD, how we as a council could maybe partner with those organizations who do have the virtual content and like even like make that, um, you know, available. You know, uh, within the county, uh, through like maybe it's a Zoe that we have like, you know, the ballet and the symphony and da, 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 da. And they all have virtual programming that it could be like a one pager with links that can go to schools within Adams County. Or just even on the website, um, so that it still becomes available and accessible for Adams County residents.
I like that idea, Jesse. So, uh, Zoe, would you, uh, please put that down either for our debrief or for, um, retreat or both to have a discussion?
Yeah, I kind of have just communication to organizations in general, because we've talked a lot about the council's goals, communicating those out. Jesse, you were talking about bridging connection to cities and towns, venue highlights, things like that. So I think that's a great addition to this bigger topic. So anything else you can think of as far as that communicating out to organizations? Or vice versa?
Jesse, did you have anything else or?
No, I'm pretty sure we'll brainstorm more.
Okay. All righty. Anyone else? Okay. And Dana, really don't take, you know, this is just concern of the console and, you know, that it's, nothing is personal. You know that.
None taken.
All righty. All right. With that, um, Zoe, do you have any updates?
I don't. I just want to say thank you for, for everything that you've done. And I know that I sent out a, a request to, since we've canceled our meeting next week to get those scores in as soon as possible, but looking at my calendar, I won't even have time next week to look at them. So feel free to take the week, um, and then just make sure that, that everything's in by the end of next week. And then we'll start doing all the stuff. So thank you, everyone.
All right. Well, again, thank you, board. I just, we love working with you and, and all the great comments and all the things we're learning from each other through this grant cycle. And I wanted to also thank the grant applicants. Uh, thank you for submitting your grant to us. You know, we're excited to help out all the organizations. So with that, um, we are adjourned. Thank you.